Send here to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Killable Hills Board of Commissioners. Thank you all for being here. I could always never, I never can remember whether we try to do the moment of silence first or the pledge of allegiance first. I don't know which is, is, is usually done first, but let's do the moment of silence first. There's obviously a lot of our, a number of families in our, in our thoughts and prayers this evening. After a big car wreck here in town last night, some serious injuries. So be thinking of them and on a positive note, congratulations to Rachel's family that's expanded this week. And I think today's Michael's birthday as well. So a few things to think about while we take a moment of silence. Will you join me for, for a few minutes here? Thank you so much. And now for our favorite part of a Zoom meeting, trying to speak in unison when there's a delay. Otherwise known as the pledge of allegiance. I will, I will start and we'll all try to hang in there together. You're ready? I pledge allegiance. To the Republic.
Liberty.
That was never fun. Always glad to do it, but it's hard, it's hard to hear everybody like a half second off in it. Moving into our agenda, we, we have sent out the agenda a few days ago. You've had a little bit of time to look it over. If you like what you see, we're looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion, Mayor.
Okay, a motion from Mr. Winley and a second from Mr. McAvoy. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will do a quick roll call vote. We know that BJ and Mr. McAvoy are in the affirmative. Ivy, how do you vote?
Ivy, you're muted.
Sorry, yes.
Get that out of the way. Got to have somebody on mute. That's her, our next affirmative. Mr. Gray, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right. And I'm an affirmative too. We have unanimously approved a agenda. Our first item, of course, is a, is a public hearing. I will let Casey jump in here to give us all the details. We're talking about a conditional use site plan at Bermuda Bay. That's a planned unit development. It's called section 200A. The, the site has two four-story multifamily structures and associated site improvements.
Thank you, Mayor. There will be a public hearing tonight conducted by the Killable Hills Board of Commissioners. And the following rules of procedure are going to apply to the, this hearing. A public notice of each hearing was published in the newspaper and posted on the town bulletin boards in accordance with the statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of this public notice has also been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk, though we're virtual, will be recording all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and made part of the record of this hearing. Also, those written comments shall have or shall be submitted in full to the town clerk. If speaking tonight, please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issues at hand and to a time period of three minutes. A five-minute exception will be made if there's a spokesperson for a group or if your statement was submitted in writing to the town clerk. All speakers, though we won't be coming to the microphone, if you chime in here, please announce your name and your address. There will be no debates during these hearings at any point in time. And again, I do want to point out that, that there is now with COVID, considering we're doing virtual meetings in a public fashion or a public forum. There's a requirement due to COVID that the board be able to receive public comment for 24 hours following the electronically conducted public hearing. This is pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 166A 19.24. And thus no action can be taken at this meeting. And if appropriate and based on board direction, action however, will be scheduled for the Tuesday, February 9th, 2021 meeting. So the first public hearing will now come to order and the hearing is called for the purpose of the Killable Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following. A conditional use site plan within Bermuda Bay Plan Unit Development, Section 200A. Amendment to the site plan for two four-story multifamily structures and associated site improvements. And I don't know if we have anybody signed up or if we're doing the raise of the hand, how that's working. But I will turn it over to anyone who would like to speak.
Think Michael is moderating. Do you, do you see anything on your end of anybody raising their hand? Maybe Michael's muted.
Mayor Sproul, just trying to, we're reviewing right now. If anyone, this is Deputy Town Clerk Michael Odell. If anyone would like to speak at the public hearing comment, please raise your hand and we will unmute you and bring you into the, into where you can be heard by the board. Mr. Dellogg, you can, may go ahead and start speaking.
Yes, my name is Jim Delalage and I'm at 11:07 in Cambridge Cove. And my question is this, is that also a public hearing then? I think that some of the residents within Bermuda Bay have already voiced their opinion, whether they're positive or negative. I'm not real sure, but at the same time, I'd just like to understand from the commissioner's point of view, how those things are taken under consideration and what weight do they hold?
As Casey mentioned, that this isn't, this forum isn't kind of a back and forth. It's not a discussion, but we are taking one comment at a time and we will, we will address that at the end.
Mayor Sproul, we now have Maria.
Hi, thank you for taking my call as well. I live at 1528 Bailey's Bay Road in the Devonshire piece of Bermuda Bay. And I have safety concerns that I just wanted to bring to your attention. So a couple of them, there is a single road that enters into Bermuda Bay. And it actually goes down to one lane, one way and one lane, the other way, right in front of where the proposed site is to be built. With the addition of all of these extra homes and traffic, it's a concern of mine that safety will be, there will be a challenge as it relates to that road, both egress, ingress, and certainly in the event of an emergency. The second concern that I have that I'd like to bring to your attention is parking. We actually had the fire marshal come through here a month or a few ago during the summer months of the current capacity. And actually said that people were being parked illegally because there's not sufficient parking. And that is even without those buildings being built. People were parked on Bermuda Bay, on Bailey's Bay, on some of the other large thoroughfares. And so the fire department had concerns that they could not bring any emergency vehicles in here. The addition of these properties is only going to exacerbate the parking. And again, my concern is as it relates to safety. And then I am also not sure if there's another exits. That it actually, I know that there's an exit toward the back. If you're familiar with it, it comes out of the, I think it goes on to bomb, bomb day drive or bomb drive or whatever in the back, but it is not cleared. There's no way to really use it. So safety is my main concern, main concern. Extra children playing cars parked on the roads where there shouldn't be any, any emergency equipment not able to access in the event of an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria, is your last name Hester? Ma'am, I just wanted for the record.
Oh, yes, absolutely. H E S T E R, 1528 Bailey's Bay Road.
Thank you very much. Are there any others who wish to speak during the public hearing comment? Please raise your hand. Mr. Voland, if I'm pronouncing that.
Yes, my name is Craig Voland. 1325 Devonshire. I did send in a note, but with the last person, Ms. Hester's comments. When you come out of, I'm on Devonshire, when you drive out of there by monsters, it's slightly dangerous as it sits right now without any extra traffic on the road. The view, the sight lines are bad coming from the back of the plan are from the east side going west, just to put that in the notes from someone that has been through there. That's all I have to say, but I, I don't have to comment on my note I sent in. I'll let you look at that when you get to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any others that wish to speak? Please raise your hand. Mayor Sproul, that is all who've raised their hand out of panelists and attendees.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. I know it's technically tricky. We want to give everybody a little extra time because there's a lot of times folks navigating this technology infrequently or first time maybe. So thanks for giving a little extra time there. Mr. Varnell, are, are, is there something formal we need to do to wrap this up?
No, Mayor, a public hearing, you guys are, will now have board discussion, but public hearing will be closed at the conclusion of that discussion and you guys will put that to a vote.
Gotcha. The, the closing of the public hearing, right?
Correct.
Gotcha. So, and we won't be taking action until later because of the requirement for 24 more hours of public comment because of doing this virtually and COVID. I would like to just, to let the folks, I know there's probably more than just the few folks that spoke. We did get a number of emails, letters from folks in the neighborhood there. And we understand that it's a, it's a pretty big project and a lot of change going on there. I hope that we can allay your fears about the, the links to which these plans have been reviewed. It's been quite extensive. All, all the safety rules are applied stringently across the board. Traffic, I know, my perfect example, my street, I live just around the corner. It used to be a dead end street and it eventually was cut through and now it's kind of a thoroughfare to the school. And we also, you know, it was, was a quiet little street. Now there's, I think we had five houses built on it just this week. There's just this year alone in the last year. Change keeps on coming at us. What else did I have marked down here? Oh, traffic, you know, traffic is also analyzed pretty thoroughly. It's also a two-lane road going to Collington and there's 2,000 some odd lots back there. And then get in and out on a two-lane road. I don't think anybody's thinking we need four lanes going into Bermuda Bay. But I understand that the big change is always, is always a challenge. Did any other board members have any other comments? We, I also, last thought was when we were reviewing these, these notes here that the, the wanted to reiterate that the planning board had reviewed it extensively over a number of months and had brought it forward with a recommendation of approval, having gone through that process. Did any of the other, of our other board members like to comment about the public hearing?
Mayor, if I could just maybe address that first question, you touched on it a little bit, but the first person asked how the comments sort of weigh into our opinion, I think, or our vote is what maybe the question was. And I, I just wanted to say that I, I do appreciate the comments because it, you know, I, I happen to walk in that area a lot. So I do see, but I don't live, you know, we don't live in areas, areas obviously that we're making decisions on that, you know, are affected by the decisions we make. And so I would say that's why it's important for people to, you know, continue to give us feedback. And so personally, what I do is I take that information and I read it. And then I usually end up going to staff, which is what I did with this. And, you know, Meredith and I talked about a few things that I had some concerns about. So I just wanted to maybe just give my perspective of what I do with people's comments. And I think we all do that. I just wanted to address that.
That's a very good point. I was thinking the same thing that when I can, I try to call folks that leave a phone number. There were a large number this particular time, so can't always get to everybody. But my phone number is, is out there publicly. It's 252-202-8837. And I welcome anybody's call if you want to talk about things, you know, at length that we might not have here to talk about. We've all been in that situation where development is happening in our neighborhood or near us. And the concerns are many and we want to let you know that it's all being scrutinized diligently. Anybody else on the board like to, to weigh in on the public comments?
Mayor John Winley here. I'd, I'd like to really echo Ivy's sentiment. Public comments are always a really good thing. Sometimes it can bring a side of an argument or a part of an issue that we may not be totally aware of. And it really can educate us on concerns people have all throughout the town. So they, to answer that gentleman's question, yes, they are very helpful and they are appreciated. And when the first couple of meetings the planning board had about this project, they received quite a few public comments of the opposite side, pretty much from the Chamber of Commerce and people in the business community in support of this. So the, all different types of comments are welcome and really help give us as a board, I think, a broader understanding of the issue.
Well put, John, well put. Mr. Gray, Mr. McAvoy, I didn't want to overlook you if you had, had thoughts or comments you wanted to include.
No, sir, but I, you know, I echo what Ivy and John have said as well and, and what you said.
Super.
I would just be echoing what everyone else said, Mayor.
All right. Then I guess we are looking for a motion to wrap up the public hearing.
Sorry, guys, that's correct. And, and you would also, this is Casey Varnell. You would also want to, again, ha- have this pushed out and just make a motion to have a decision on this matter at the February 9th meeting.
Got it. Anybody want to put their name on that? Well, that paraphrase will work for us.
I'll make a motion to put this for a vote on, at the February 9th meeting.
Second.
And close public comment.
There you go. All right, we have a, a motion from Ms. Ingram and a second from Mr. Gray. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, the rest of the roll call looks like. Mr. McAvoy, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right. And Mr. Winley, how do you vote?
Yes.
An affirmative from me. We will take this up at the next meeting. And again, thank you to everybody that participated, both via email and in the public comment tonight. We really appreciate the input. The next item on our, so, so Casey, I guess, public hearing is separate from public comment. So I guess our next item is public comment. Same, same rules apply. But this time the topic is anything you'd like to say to the board.
That, that's correct. This isn't a hearing. This is a time for the public to step up and respond. However, yes, the rules of timing, length of talk, those still apply. Yes, Mayor.
Yep. Yes. So yeah, if you, if you have something to say, let us know. Raise your hand. Mr. Odell will, will recognize you and you'll have three minutes or five if you're representing a group.
Mayor Sproul, this is Deputy Clerk Michael Odell. No one has raised their hand at this time.
Okay, hopefully everybody is up to speed on how to do that and we haven't left anybody out. Hearing that and having this amount of time, well, we will now close public comment. Nothing to respond to there. So are there any introductions and presentations before we get into the rest of the agenda?
No, sir.
I didn't think so. And no, no old business to take up tonight. Hearing none, we will move on to new business, which includes item number one, the 2020 audit report and the 2021 budget status update. We have, we've got some items in there about positions that we had put off hiring in the past. So we'll, I guess that is Ms. Diaz, or are you going to have somebody else present this? Is that right?
Actually, we're going to do a little bit of a tag team this evening, Mayor. Assistant Finance Director Charlene Allen is here to do the, the audit report part. And then I'm going to chime in a little bit on some of the budget issues. So I'm going to turn it over first to, to Charlene.
Super, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, this is Charlene Allen, Assistant Finance Director. And it's good to be here. I am going to, first of all, I'm just going to kind of go over the, the annual report you have and the CAFR. The, the town of Killable Hills engaged the CPA firm of Potter and Company, PA, an independent auditor to conduct the annual audit of fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. Bob Taylor, managing partner and his staff provided a comprehensive, efficient and timely audit with minimal destruct, distractions to staff. Their unmodified opinion, which is the best you can get, is found in the independent auditors' report on pages one through three of our June 30th, 2020 CAFR. And I'll give you a few minutes if you want to turn there. And that, that's the audit opinion, which is the best you can get. Some of the highlights of the fiscal year include, and I'm just going to go over a couple of these and just reference a couple of, of the exhibits. The general on a sign, the general fund is on assigned fund balance, which is the amount available for spending at the government's discretion at June 30th, was 11,350,839 dollars or 60.16% of your total general fund expenditures for the year. The general fund revenues, which is on exhibit five, which in your report here would be on page 28, exhibit five. This overall positive budget variance of 105,243 dollars. The sales tax and occupancy tax revenues were under budget by only $1,128,563, respectively. Going to the water department, which is the water fund, excuse me. The water fund, which is accounted for like a business. If you'll look at exhibit number seven, which is on page 32, just a few pages over there. The water fund reported operating income of $1,259,935. For the budgetary statements, revenues were under expenditures by $437,391 due to over $2 million in capital improvements, which this included the water tank construction. The water fund is healthy and profitable. You'll also see on that same exhibit, the wastewater fund there, which is accounted for like a business on page 32, reported an operating loss of $75,189. For the budgetary statement, revenues exceeded expenditures by $14,965. So this was just kind of an overview of what the different funds did. And again, the town, the Killable Hills has received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the year ended June 30th, 2019. And you'll see a copy of that certificate in there. This is the 32nd consecutive year that Killable Hills has received this award. To commemorate that achievement, the Government Finance Officers Association has awarded the town with a medallion to be added to the existing plaque as a testament to the town's commitment to producing an annual report that evidences the spirit of full disclosure and transparency. We have submitted the June 30th, 2020 CAFR to the GFOA for judging and expect our report to once again receive this recognition. We want to thank the finance department team as well as all the other departments, management and Board of Commissioners for their continued support. Okay, I'm going to go over just a couple of revenue items, just to kind of bring you up to date of where the, the revenue is for three of our main taxes. You have your monthly reports that you receive, but this is an update through January to let you know where we are with sales tax, occupancy tax and land transfer tax. And I'm going to put a few numbers out there just to kind of state those, but give you the percentages of the variances of where we are. For sales tax, and this does not, this does not include the MSD portion because that's separate and apart. But the actual year-to-date for January is 1,716,707. The budget year-to-date for January is 1,505,505. So the variance there is in excess of 215,202. When we look at the variance over the prior year, it is up by 18%, which is good.
Good.
When we look at occupancy tax, occupancy tax, the actual year-to-date for January is 2,383,729. The year-to-date budget for January is 1,495,752. That variance is in excess of 887,977, which is 28% over the prior year, which is good there. When we look at the occupancy tax that we have budgeted, compared to our actual, the total budget for occupancy tax, tax for fiscal year 21 is 2,473,914 dollars. When you take the difference in that, it's, it's really close. The actual is 2,383,729. So that is exceeding what we've budgeted there. Our land transfer tax, actual year-to-date for January is 764,717. Our budget for year-to-date January is 312,500. The variance there is in excess of 452,217 dollars. The variance, if you compare it to the prior year, it's over 96%. Which the budget there for the land transfer tax is 625,000. So as of January, we're already in excess of 139,000 for that revenue. When we look at the, the total variance of those three taxes, variance year-to-date for January, it's in excess of 1,555,396. So the year-to-date revenues through January show a tremendous positive budget variance as well as our growth over the prior year. Does the board have any questions of Charlene concerning that very good information?
I think we need to have two medallions after hearing that. That was pretty good.
The town's been very fortunate. What a great job that they're doing, keeping track of all this. And they have really, they, they've really helped a lot this year in, in, in a bad year and have done a fantastic job. I'm, I'm impressed.
Yes, it's a, it's a nice turnaround from the spring when we were shut down. So.
Yes.
We're very fortunate here in Dare County. Obviously, some of our communities to the west have not been so fortunate. With, with that report, I'd like to kind of move into discussing a bit about the upcoming budget and some of the things that, that we're hoping to, to present to you as rec.
to present to you as recommendations when you get the, the recommended budget and the manager in May. But one of the, one of the things this evening that I would appreciate your approval on are the positions that we discussed. As I told you, when, when the current year's budget was presented back in May of 2020, I had not recommended or a street position that Steve had requested and that was very much needed due to, to the unknowns with the COVID. And then at the board retreat, you had talked about a position that you'd like to see added where we could concentrate more on maintaining our beach accesses a little better, not insinuating that they're not maintained, but just, just a little more housekeeping, you know, making sure the nails are down and that they just look better. And then also utilizing that position and, and other divisions when, when they're not doing that work. Steve Albright has put together a very good summary of how those two positions would work and, and what we would have them do. But as we talked about it, with Sean and I discussed it with Steve in the fall, what, what we really need is these positions to be ready to go late spring, early summer, as opposed to when the budget would be adopted and we would only begin advertising for them in July. And that's what I'm requesting this evening is your approval on a budget amendment that would allow for this. We feel very comfortable based on the revenue report that Charlene just gave you, that this is something that we could do. And we also feel that it would, it would really serve us much better to go ahead and get these, get these positions filled. So that, that's the first thing that, that Mayor would, would appreciate some direction and hopefully motion from the board with.
Certainly, thanks to Steve on the report that came in our packet. It was detailed and just to reiterate what you said, I, I know we had talked both at the retreat and in the spring about why those positions had been held off on because of the uncertainty of the, of the cash flow coming out of the lockdown when we had the bridges shut and all that sort of thing. So the turnaround has been pretty dramatic and those positions align with goals that the board has spoken about extensively. So certainly have the support of the mayor. We'll, we'll pass it around a little bit and, and we'll hopefully we'll get that motion together. I, I hope that's where we're going. Anybody else like to?
I'm all in favor of Mayor, and
Yes.
when time comes, I'll be glad to make a motion.
Okay, super, super. Maybe we don't need to make it complicated. If, if there's any further discussion, please pipe in. Otherwise, we'll, we'll go for that motion.
I would move that we, we approve the presentation from the town manager, item number one, new business, for adding the positions of this fiscal year, along with any necessary budget amendments. Does that cover it, Debbie?
Yes, sir. That's perfect.
John Windley here. I will second that.
All right, fantastic. We have a, a motion from Mr. Gray and a second from Mr. Windley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. The remainder of the board includes Mr. McAvoy?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Ingram, how do you, how do you feel?
Yes.
Yes, and an affirmative vote from the mayor as well makes a well-rounded approval of that motion. Looking forward to getting those new positions online, starting, I think, I think it laid out April, May, June, so we'll have them for the last quarter of this fiscal year, which would put us in a good position for the summer to be prepared for bringing our visitors in again.
Yes, sir. Thank, thank you very much. Now to move into a little bit about some of the other things that we're looking at, including in the upcoming fiscal year's budget. As you recall, excuse me, as you recall, one of the divisions that was, that got hit pretty hard with the cuts was our Buildings and Grounds Capital Outlay, other improvement that specifically spoke to our recreation. And I very much would like to go back in and kind of, kind of look at that budget as if we were starting anew. We were in 2019 and just kind of skipping over 2020 at this point and, and simply going back and including, including those, some of those items. And just to kind of give you a reminder, Ocean Bay Boulevard, Bath House, gazebo, and the handrails. We really need to bring a lot of our back, beach accesses up to compliance improvements. A pavilion for public use over at Aviation Park. We, as we all are hoping tremendously, this lockdown shutdown isn't going to last forever and we're, we're going to be able to get back together as a community and, and do some of the things that we enjoy so much. We have some other playground equipment needs that we'd like to include. And then the roof improvement that was for this building here at Town Hall Drive, we deferred that. Other things like that that just got, you know, just had to be put back on the back burner. We discussed at a previous meeting when the board approved the current fiscal year street improvement, the big third street project. The desperate need to follow our street improvement plan and do the Memorial Street Ditch project in the upcoming fiscal year. That's going to be a very large ticket item, but I think as we all know, it's, it's needed and we need to, we need to keep that going and keep on our street improvement plan. Those things, along with continuing providing our employees benefits, cost of living, continuing with our merit and bonus program and our professional development. I feel that I have the guidance from you that I need. If there's something that I'm missing, please share it with me. But Beverly and I have discussed, and we, we feel that we're, we're pretty comfortable in knowing what you want to see in a recommended budget that you would get in May.
Right. I think following along to that, you really hit most of the nails on the head there, to coin a phrase. We, we, as a board, have definitely had the theme of investing where we have a little bit of extra in, into the West Side Recreation Group and, and things that have to do with quality life for our, our residents that live here and, and our visitors, but it sounds like you've got that all aligned for us. Those big capital improvement projects, I know we had put some of them on the back burner and, and those things are, it's very nice to be able to put them back. Hopefully, as we move through the spring, you can really kind of give us a, a better feel for, as we put, as we roll those things back in, you know, what, what else can we do in this sort of special year? Because I don't think that these surpluses are necessarily going to last another season, so we don't want to count on them. You know, going into 2022, 23 so much, but in the, the 2021, 22 budget, you know, we'll have, we'll have the money that came in in the last few months. And hopefully we can put it to good use and, and not encumber ourselves in the, in the future too much. And get, get, we don't want to get out over our skis because we're having a good moment right now.
Yes.
If any other, any other board members like to, to provide any feedback to the town manager, feel free.
I, I would like to say, Ms. Diaz, yes, I agree that we, we'd like to see, you know, everything that was cut, you know, taken care of due to that surplus. And personally, I'm, I'm mostly about seeing about putting some of this extra surplus in addition to those items that were rolled back, but towards recreation, I feel like that's our, our biggest issue, right? I mean, we don't, I just feel like we don't have the, the quality of recreation here that we need in Kill Devil Hills. So I, I feel like a lot of that, you know, directed towards that compared to what the other towns are doing and whatnot. I'd like to see, you know, some more money spent on that specifically.
Good deal.
That's my, that's my two cents.
Do you like to weigh in?
Mayor, that was wise, wise words that you had, and I'd like to echo what Commissioner McAvoy said that, you know, of course, we, we need to look at recreation and improving that. But I also want to say that I think that Debbie has made some of the tough calls when it was hard to make the tough calls. And I truly appreciate her being able to do that. And restoration now is important. And, and then my only other thought is what, what BJ was saying. We, we need to look at improving our recreation in Kill Devil Hills to a little bit higher level.
Right, right. Including the existing ones, the, the, the things that we have need to be maintained and, and other places we can, could push into.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Beach accesses, like she mentioned, you know, accessibility things and code, code things. We want to be setting the example to the public and the community and, you know, how to maintain facilities.
Yes, sir.
Well, we really appreciate that. We look forward to going through the spring and, and diving deeper into the budget as we get there. It's, it's definitely going to make an interesting spring and an interesting year, even more interesting. So thank you for a great report and, and
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Kind of going back to the beginning of the presentation. It was reported on page 12, middle paragraph, that unassigned fund bound, fund balance represents 60.16% of the total general fund expenditures. And normally, when we have our budget workshops, we'll get a page that shows the line graph for the last few years of unassigned fund balance and that percentage. I was just curious if you could, I mean, if you don't have the information in front of us now, it's no, not the biggest deal, but it seems like that's a big improvement over fiscal year 19. Could that just fill me in on, you know, how much did unassigned fund balance was? That percentage might have grown year over year. So I recall it being around the 50% mark. I mean, a 10% jump is, is pretty awesome.
That, that percentage is based on the expenses, and we take that, the fund balance number there is pretty close to what we had available the prior year. But what we do is take a percentage of the budgeted expenditures for that year. So that's where that percentage is a little different there. It is pretty close to what it was the prior year. I can pull some of those numbers for you and share that with the board and, and kind of look back over the last, what, five years?
Yeah, I was just curious about trends when I was reading this, but again, I can be sent as an email. No need to rush right now.
Okay.
Good, good, good point. You know, the rainy day fund is something we always have to keep an eye on.
Okay.
You know, there's a, in the mayor's agenda, I'm going to mention a little bit about the fireworks in July and I wanted to, as long as we're talking about budget, sort of guidance. I spoke with Dave Hallick, Park Service, about how well-received the fireworks were in December. As, as an unusual, interesting thing to get people together and bring some cheer in a tough time this past winter. So we chatted a bit about what might be possible in terms of partnering for other events, whether it be fireworks or something else in coordination with that anniversary of the, the first powered flight on December 17th. He also brought up that there's an aviation day that they'd looked at making a little bit more of a celebration out of. I think it's in late summer, July or August. So we talked about all sorts of things that might be possible, just kicking things around. I had mentioned that tying in with our aviation history, there are lots of outfits out there that are doing drone shows that are, you know, lighted up drones that make pictures in the sky around the world. They're growing every year, and it would be a nice tie-in with our, our history of flight. He really liked that idea. There's some technical issues that we talked about, but I think they can all be worked out. There's also that projectionist that did some stuff with the monument a few years ago. We might be able to talk to that person or maybe some other folks that do that sort of artistic work that we, it's about video projection on a big monument that could be something that, you know, I think like, like the town manager said, we're all going to be very eager to get together and gather once we are allowed to do so, once it's safe to do so. So we're thinking forward into the next budget. And I, and I noted somewhere in the packet that when we're talking about, we're getting a, a great a deal, a great contract with the, with the fireworks provider for 4th of July in that they have erased those sort of penalties for cancellation. If COVID is still getting in our way, there won't be the penalties that we were wringing our hands about last year. So that's nice and, and but it, one of the other details in there was that if we would like to apply for matching funds or, or other funds from Tourism Bureau, so there was something in there about a deadline in February, maybe mid-February. So maybe that's worth discussing briefly now, just to see if, if the rest of the board has some appetite for moving in that direction with, you know, some of the funds that we, we have to work with.
Yeah, Mayor, this idea, I, I would definitely agree. I think it, the fireworks were a big hit, I think, coordinating with, with something that close and that monumental near us is, is a, is a win-win.
Right, sort of civic pride, folks to get together and have some fellowship, but also it's our, our bread and butter is tourism and anytime we can make the news and get some earned media out of celebrating our heritage and our history of powered flight here. I think, like you said, it's a sort of a triple win for the community, for the, the business community and, and and for everybody's well-being, as it were.
Count me in, Mayor.
Yeah, all right, super. That's, that's, I was just trying to take everybody's temperature real quick about that. And Ivy and I had talked briefly about it since she serves on the Visitors Bureau Board for us. She had offered to be a liaison with Dave Hallick about the, the folks on his end that would work with us towards whatever we wanted to put together, whether it was something to do with a show, food trucks, something in the evening in December, or something in the daytime or the evening for the aviation day in the summer. I think, if I'm not mistaken, just real quick, we're all still on board to keep doing fireworks on 4th of July, I assume. That's a big hit, and we kind of spread the, the love around the Outer Banks, and, and we're one of the destinations. We wouldn't want to burden everybody else, somebody else with those big crowds. We, we like to do our part. And of course, that's supported by the, by the Visitors Bureau as well.
Yes, Mayor, BJ McAvoy here. I, I would agree also that, you know, that's a, a great opportunity for, I mean, it's obviously in the middle of December to have a celebration, actually surprised in a way that has not been a, as big of a day annually as it could be. And I think that showed us that a lot of the local folks really do want to celebrate that day and would like to have that an event of some sort that they can all gather. It was really, the whole beach got together for, for that firework event. And it was nice to see that. And I think, you know, being that we are lucky enough to have the monument right here in our town, we should certainly, you know, promote that and make that a day where, you know, if, if for nothing else, the locals really get to enjoy that.
Right, right. Dave and I talked about that exact thing that, you know, it's spread out on the beach. That was, that was nice. We're kind of just mimicking what we normally do 4th of July. But he's got, you know, we've got that huge piece of property with hundreds of parking spaces and lots of room to spread out. There could be presentations about the, the anniversary. They already, already do that stuff in the daytime, but you can make an evening event with, with a show, a light show, a presentation, a, a projection show, something like that. You could even bring in food trucks and really make it a family event that would be even more of a communal experience.
Completely agree. I completely agree.
Well, super. Sounds like we're all, we're all in a, going in the right direction there and the same direction. And like I said, Ivy has offered to help move that ball down the court. Hopefully, that's good guidance for Ms. Diaz and, and the crew when it comes to budgeting. And if we hustle a little bit, we might be able to pull something together with enough detail to see if we can get some matching funds before that deadline in the middle of February. If that's not too ambitious.
Yes, that, that is good guidance. From the, from the town standpoint, we would still, if I'm understanding correctly, we would still do the grant application to the Visitors Bureau for the 4th of July fireworks. And then we'll wait to hear back from Commissioner Ingram on any kind of partnership that we may be looking to do with, with Park Service either on Aviation Day in August or December the 17th and, for another event.
Or maybe both, yeah.
Yeah, both.
We could pull together.
I would say both, but I would all I would say both, but I would also tell, I would say to Ivy, just I, I could tell her later, but Commissioner Ingram, I would say, you know, the December event is something that was, that I think could be real memorable. It was, it was memorable for everybody this, this December, you know, because it isn't the summer, because, because we're, well, because we were locked down. But also, you know, it was something special for, for the people that live here. So.
Dan, it was in the evening. There are festivities all during that day, but us folks that have to go to work all day, I always have to miss out on that. So it was nice in the evening when a lot of folks are free to come, come work, come see, do an event, something like that.
I agree.
Super. Okay. Well, it sounds like we have a, a bit of a plan there and we've got a little guidance about the bigger picture about 2021, 22 budget. And we, we can move along, I guess.
Yes, sir. Thank, thank you all very much.
Thank you for all you do. We really appreciate it. And we, we had, like you said earlier, reiterating one more time, the tough decisions that you, you recommended and other, I know I've talked to a lot of the other mayors that really, really kind of squeezed their budgets probably more than they wished that they had. And we really kind of cut the perfect line, just enough caution. So we feel like, you know, hindsight's 2020, but we're looking pretty good in hindsight right now. So thank you for all your hard work there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. So let's see, I've lost my, I have too many papers again. Make sure I get organized. There we go. All right. So that was new business committee reports. Any committee, committees meet since our last meeting two weeks ago?
None at this time from me, from me.
Okay. I didn't think so. Just wanted to check to be sure. The next item is Commissioner's agenda. Anybody, I see John waving his hand. You want to jump in?
I just want to express appreciation and gratitude to the Dare County Health Department for the great job they're doing with planning and rolling out and executing the COVID vaccines and all the vaccinations throughout Dare County. Is they're doing an amazing job. It's just pretty inspirational and thank you to all the good folks making that happen.
Yeah, I, I certainly echo those sentiments for sure. Thanks for bringing that up. Any other commissioner comments? Yes, Mr. Gray.
I, I was fortunate. I was one of the ones that received that shot this past Saturday. And to, to watch all those folks out there working in the First Flight High School. It was amazing. It, it was flawless. At the same time, they have noticed a reduction in the vaccine. And I would urge everyone to contact your representatives and tell them just how important it is that, that, you know, our health department gets the doses that they need so that they can make sure they don't have to cancel any appointments. They've had to cancel some. And I think it's important for everybody to reach out to your representatives at the state level and express to them how important it is to keep the number of doses coming into Dare County. Because we, we need to follow through with this and make sure that everybody gets their, their doses as needed. So I just want to throw that extra little bit in there.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I had mentioned, I meant to mention that earlier. And just to add a little bit to that, I was on a call earlier this week with all the other mayors and Sheila Davies and, and the commissioners, county commissioners. And we got a lot of that stuff that came out in the news a little bit earlier. So it was interesting to see what was going on behind the scenes. There were calls that included all 100 county commissioners, chairs of all the county commissions. There was another call with all of the health directors. And in each of them, the state was profusely apologizing for the missteps that were made regarding that sort of reallocation without any warning of all those doses. So after a long discussion about it, I was given Ben Kahoon, Mayor of Nagshead, the kudos, because he, he really stated the question best. He said, Sheila. So I know that a whole lot of people have been raising a whole lot of cane with a whole lot of people in Raleigh. Do we need to keep doing that? Is, would that be helpful? And she came back with, I think the message has been received. It was loud and it was clear that everybody was very upset with how that all went down. And the powers that be up the chain are promising they will not make those kinds of mistakes again. The other thing that's a sort of a side note is that she was telling the group that there's a lot of paperwork, you know, rec, recording of all this stuff that's required. And like others have said, we are doing an exceptionally great job. We're kind of the model for the rest of the state when it comes to how we're rolling this out. So Sheila has been making the case that when there are areas that are not able to get their doses out effectively, that maybe they should shift, you know, in the positive direction our way. And so that has not been ruled out and that may be a possibility in the future. So that every, there's a whole lot of smart people trying to figure out a very tough logistics thing to, to get the most doses and the most arms as quickly as possible. And I think after that misstep, a whole lot of people are going to be working even harder to make sure they don't, don't cause any more ripples in the road unnecessarily. But good points, like you said, I think a lot of the state leaders were hearing from a lot of people over the last few days. So lessons learned, hopefully, hopefully. Any other commissioners' agendas that I might have missed? Ivy, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Good deal.
You know what? I just want to say real quick, I, I had emailed this out, but I just want to say, I just want to express my gratitude to all of our officers that were at the accident last night. Not only did I know who was involved, but I happened to come upon it traveling south shortly after. So I happened to see the entire scene and I just wanted to express how, I know it happens over and over. But it's not often that you know someone who's involved and see the scene. And so I just wanted to express my gratitude because that scene was, they had it dialed in. They had, it was smooth. They were rerouting traffic smoothly. I mean, it, it was an incredible job by all involved. So I just wanted to express my gratitude.
Yeah, very good point. It's a, it's a, it's a double edged sword. It's sad, sad that we've gotten so good at doing something that's so tough. And it unfortunately happens altogether too often. Our, our thoughts are with those families and everybody involved in that. I, I know, know the family as well. Yeah, tough, tough stuff there. So if there are no other commissioners' agenda, I think I've actually really covered my mayor's agenda was really about the fireworks and, and celebrating some birthdays and some babies, as I've mentioned. So I don't think I have anything else. We'll move on to the town manager's agenda.
Nothing this evening, sir.
All right. Then town attorney, any, anything else you'd like to bring up, sir?
Nothing from me, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Then we'll go back to Ms. Diaz with the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Thank you. It's very, very short this evening. We have the minutes from the January 11th, 2021 meeting. Two budget amendments, one for undesignated fund balance to forward LPDI. That's Local Programming Development Initiative Grant Funding from fiscal year 1920. That GEAD Government Educational Channel Committee approved the extension of following due to the COVID-19 pandemic. B is to appropriate funds from undesignated fund balance to fund the 75, 25% grant from the North Carolina DEQ for more shores, estrian access. This contract was approved at the November 2020 meeting, if you remember correctly. Staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as submitted and the motion would be in order.
Super.
This is Ivy. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
John here. I'll second that.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the, the rest of the sentiments go. Mr. Gray?
Oh, yes.
Mr. McAvoy?
Yes.
An affirmative from the mayor. We have a consent agenda. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. And just before the board does adjourn, when you have your next public comment, I would just like to remind everyone that our February board meeting is on Tuesday, February night. Thank you.
Very, very good point. Very good point. And if I, if I apologize for going out of order, I remember the other one thing I wanted to add, I did not jot it down and I was counting on my brain and that's a bad idea sometimes. I had a couple of calls from some residents in the town that are in the business of selling art and having little art shows and that sort of thing. And they were relaying to me that they founded a challenge that, that there are some rules that we have currently that restrict what you can do in terms of those kinds of pop-up events that they can't really be done in the, in the summer. So I thought I would just put that out there as something staff could think about between now and the next meeting regarding, you know, what, where did that come from? And, you know, I know that we don't want to have, we were trying to avoid issues with parking and that sort of thing, but maybe there's some accommodation that can be made there. It's definitely worth a, a fresh look, I think. So.
Yes, sir. We can certainly add that to the agenda and, and I'm familiar with, with what you're speaking about. We, we ran into some of those issues at the staff level as well. Part of it was due to the pandemic this year where some of the larger art shows that are held in certain venues were not able to be accommodated. And so some of the people were trying smaller things and our ordinance doesn't allow for a lot of those. So I, what I would suggest is that we just bring that back up to the board, revisit it and see if there's things that you'd like to, to kind of lessen some of the restrictions. I, I will share with you that part of the issues become your, your brick and mortar stores that, that are here year round, that pay taxes. They have some concerns with these pop-ups that come in at the holidays and in the summer and don't, you know, don't have these same expenses. So that's kind of the, that's kind of the challenge that we see ourselves with every time we have these discussions. But it has been a while since we've reviewed it and I, and I think it's probably a good opportunity to take another look at it.
Right. Yeah. The, the time marches on and the experiences of, of the kinds of things they do in duck and the, and the farmer's market they have in, in Nagshead and in Manio show that foot traffic raises all boats. And, and sometimes those fears are, are, are overblown for, for actually, there's a lot of benefit that comes from those sorts of things. And we've also talked to the board is really wanting to have more reasons to gather. And, and they, that, that group of people that approached me had mentioned, you know, there's a lot of town property that, you know, that's sort of, there's lots of rules about what you can and can't do there, but we do want to see what we can do to encourage folks to have things to do that improve quality of life for our citizens. And so anything that circles back to that is, is worth looking at. So thank you for looking into that. And we will, we'll talk about it again next month or in a couple of weeks.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Super. Okay. So I guess the last thing we've got is one more chance for public comment in the challenging world of Zoom. If, if we have folks still out there who have thought of something to say between the beginning of the meeting and the end, here's your second chance to bend our ear and, and let us know what you're thinking. So we'd like to give you that opportunity one more time again. Three minutes. Identify yourself, tell us where you live and raise your hand and, and Mr. Odell will, will recognize you.
Mayor Sproul, no one has raised their hand.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. We just always want to make sure we give the, the, our constituents the opportunity to weigh in a couple of times each meeting. So thanks for doing that. And I have run out of words on the paper here. So the last motion is, is one to adjourn. Anybody interested? All right. We've got, we've got a motion to adjourn for Mr. Gray.
A second. And this is Ivy.
And a second for Ms. Ingram. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Windley, would you like to adjourn?
Yes.
I saw a thumbs up for anybody who's listening on the audio only and Mr. McAvoy.
Yes.
All right. And, and I agree. It's time to adjourn. It's been a great meeting, you guys. We're getting good at this Zoom thing. Hopefully we don't have to do it too much longer, but thanks for all your good insights tonight and I'll, and I'll see you guys again soon. Take care.
Take care.
Take care.